And we've got folks in line, so we are going to start right back in. Before we start, governors, very, very graciously was brought to my attention, very graciously, that when our last public speaker spoke, I failed to ask you if you had a question or comment for our last public speaker. So I'm doing that now. If you had any questions, and he's still here, and you wave your arm, we know, and thank you, and we are blessed that you are here, so thank you. Any questions or comments to the gentleman from the public, our sole public representative? Okay, seeing none. Governors online, if any of you online have questions, comments, concerns for the public representative that was here, let's hear from you. Hold that, Alec.
No, just for the...
Okay, go ahead, Alec.
Yeah, just to let you know, and I'm not asking you a question, but I want to thank you for coming to give your testimony. And simply because we don't have any questions for you, well, at least I know I heard you. I think the rest of us heard you, and we thank you for giving us that point of view.
All right, and I want to just follow up and just say thank you once again for taking the time. You came here, actually, and you did something that lawyers are really bad at. You spoke from your heart, and so I commend you for doing that, because that is some of the most honest, truthful, and caring comments that I've heard. So thank you, very much appreciated. All right, online, we've got a number of folks. Let's start with the next one, please.
Okay, we've got a question coming from Richard Peterson.
Richard, please.
Yes, my name's Dick Peterson. Thank you, President Pickett and board members, for taking comments today. My bar number's 5311. I was admitted in 1973. I retired in 2015. Always had insurance, never had a claim after I retired. I mean, I don't have insurance now because I'm retired. I've kept my license, I do my CLEs. I now have the occasional opportunity to associate with attorneys who have insurance, because in the last 20 years or so of my practice, it was primarily plaintiff personal injuries insurance. I did send written comments to the bar about this issue, but my issue is that the attorneys I associate with have malpractice insurance. And I'm asking the bar to make an exception for retired uninsured licensed attorneys who associate with insured attorneys to do personal injury claims. And the concern of the bar about people going uncompensated for malpractice is not there because the attorneys I'm associated with have insurance. And on a more personal note, I want to remain a licensed member of the bar for 50 years, and I have four years to go, so any questions about my request for the exception for a person in my situation?
All right, governors, any questions? Are you clear that there's a request for an exemption? Go ahead, Alec.
Yeah, so I guess my only question, tell me a little bit more, when you say you're associated with attorneys who have insurance, that doesn't quite sound like you are covered by them, but can you clarify?
Well, I'm covered because we are equally responsible to the client, and they have insurance, so I come under their purview. If they commit, basically, it's an association, I get an association fee, a referral fee, which the bar encourages. In fact, it's one of the reasons for people to stay licensed after they retire, and so they have sufficient insurance to pay any possible claim. And it does, it sounds like a big deal, but frankly, I've only had five, in the four years I've been retired, I've only referred five cases. I only have one going right now. But I want the opportunity to associate with an attorney who is licensed for a person that wants, comes to me and wants legal representation on an injury case. And I can't represent them because I'm retired, and I don't have insurance.
All right, anything additional?
It's forced out of the bar. I've heard all the comments, it's been a very interesting discussion. I guess the idea that you can have one rule to apply to everybody isn't necessarily so. And I saw no response when I did my written comment for people in my situation that are retired, but that have the, you know, it's very occasional chance to refer attorney, to refer clients to competent insured plaintiff attorneys.
All right, thank you. Governors online, governors, any comments, questions? Hearing none. Did we lose Paul Carla? He's on the phone. Paul, we just want to make sure we still have a quorum here. Paul, are you on the phone? How about Dan Clark or Kim Hunter? Are you still on the phone?
Yeah, Bill.
Thank you, Dan. We need Kim or Paul, because we've lost our quorum here. Can some of the governors reach out promptly? And thank you. Thanks for staying on the line, Dan Clark, very much appreciated. I want to, we're going to go to our next, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. President, don't we need seven? Eight?
It's eight. It's a good question, though. Thank you.
So we have a quorum then, because we have seven?
No, it's eight. We need eight. We're just, we're short one. And we had Kim at the beginning, and we had Paul, and I know, I only just noticed that we lost a person here, so. Let's, I know you, Carla, you're reaching out. Let's take our next phone caller, please. Hate to do it, but I'm going to, because I know you've been waiting.
This next one is coming from Doug Glunder.
Doug, please.
Yes, I am an attorney who represents some others, I believe, in my same position, which is I have a very limited practice, which is only providing legal work for a nonprofit advocacy organization, primarily in the form of writing amicus briefs. And the task force decided that people in my position were not worthy of an exemption. And I'd like to explain why I think that is a bad idea. And it really goes, looking back to the purpose of the potential mandatory insurance in the first place, is to protect what I would say is largely the class of unsophisticated people dealing with lawyers. I think that there is, or at least should be considerably less concern for institutions that are able to evaluate for themselves whether or not the gains of using a particular uninsured attorney outweigh the risks of that attorney having no insurance. So I think to the extent the insurance is required at all, it should be limited to representation of individuals. Companies, nonprofits, corporations, they are sophisticated. They can decide whether or not their needs require an insured attorney or not an insured attorney. I have no problem with disclosure requirements. They, having that affirmatively disclosed rather than just through the bar's website, that's fine. But in those instances, I think insurance should not be a requirement. And looking at my own situation, all I can see from the mandatory insurance requirement is harm all around. The result will be that I will resign my bar membership. I am not going to pay thousands of dollars a year in order to provide pro bono work, even though I think it's valuable. So I will lose out, the organization will lose out by not having me available as a resource, and frankly, the courts will lose out. I at least would like to think that my amicus briefs have been useful to the Supreme Court. So there is no gain from this, and there's a lot of harm. There is also the problem that has been raised by other commenters, and that I think needs some more exploration, of if you allow exemptions at all, how does this apply to kind of run-of-the-mill, not actual representation for money, but answering legal questions for a friend? So if, for example, you have a government in-house attorney who would be one of the exempt, the exemptions from insurance, and a friend asks them a legal question, are they required to run out and get insurance in order to answer that friend? Are they required to tell the friend, "Sorry, I absolutely can't tell you anything because I am uninsured"? And how would that be policed? That just strikes me as very problematic. So I think this whole concept has a lot of problems with it, but in particular, I think it really needs to be limited to allow those of us who provide pro bono services to organizations to be exempt from it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Governors in the room, any questions for our speaker? Seeing none. Governors online, any questions for our speaker? Hearing none. Dan Clark, are you still on the line?
I am, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it. Kim Hunter, have you rejoined us? Paul Schwiegel, have you rejoined us? Any other governors? I'm digging deep in the well here. Any other governors, have you rejoined us?
Bill, I'm sorry, I just saw an email from, or a text from Paul. He said he thought he was on hold, so I need to, he must be on a different...
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Stand by, please. We'll, we just need to make sure we've got a quorum.
One moment, let me go look in that moderator room and see if anybody's waiting in there.
Thank you. I'm not, yeah, I've already stretched it, I've already stretched it. There's a reason for it, PJ, for having a quorum. I would love to take a question, we've got a little, it's, with procedure. Yes, please. All right, yes.
May I permit the continuance of a meeting if the quorum drops, I mean, if the quorum is originally present, and the quorum drops to be one less? I am a member of an organization, I happen to be the recording secretary for an organization, which has exactly that rule. It says you can continue the meeting.
Yes.
And I'm actually a member of two, and a past president of one of them, so you might be, because you're not, you're not going to have any decisions made.
Right. I believe that used to be, I believe that used to be our rule, and that was either changed or clarified. We have to maintain a quorum, unfortunately, yeah, but I'd be great.
Bill, I'm on the, Bill, this is Kim.
All right.
Bill, this is Kim, I'm on the phone.
Thank you, Kim.
And Paul here, I'm on.
Thank you, Kim, thank you, Paul, for joining us, we appreciate it. By my count, we now have a quorum. Very much appreciate you being here and coming back again. All right, we have another speaker on the, online, please.
Yes, this next question or comment is coming from Ron Santi.
Hi, and thank you to the board and to the task force. I'm just a small timer with a license that's been active for 40 years, and I'm going to be significantly hurt by this new rule. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't go back to square one, or partway back, and look at other possibilities. One was mentioned, the universal pool. We have 40,000 attorneys in Washington, and if each of them is assessed $100, that'd be $4 million a year that could be used to buy a pool policy of some kind, probably a pretty big one. It just seems to me that we're punishing a lot of innocent attorneys who are just trying to make it to 50 years, and we don't need to do that. We can help the public, but we can also do it without harming innocent lawyers unnecessarily, where it's 15% or so of the membership. So I'd like, I'd like the board to go back and review the possibilities with the industry, perhaps, on how much insurance could you buy for $4 million a year in premiums, and possibly save all of the attorneys in Washington a considerable amount of money, thousands of dollars in some cases, by just having a pool of coverage. And I'll try to make it to 50 years, but I won't be able to withstand $2,000 and $3,000 premiums, and copays, and deductibles, and everything else, when I'm really not even practicing law. And I don't want to get into arguments with the board every year about whether I'm practicing law. Anyway, thanks for all you guys are doing, trying to get to the bottom of it, and do the best for the public and for the bar membership. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Board members, any comments or questions for this speaker? None in the room. How about online, board members, any questions, comments for this speaker? None heard. I'll say, actually, to the speaker, that's actually a great idea, and one of the first things I thought of when we started talking about mandatory malpractice, although I'll recuse and say, I wasn't on the work group for this, but I thought I would be willing to pay an amount equal to my bar license fees every year for malpractice insurance if we could get a pool, and it would be significantly less than what I pay now, for sure. So that's an interesting idea. I don't know that it's, that it's even plausible at this point, but thank you for the comment. All right, next person online.
The next person is Stanley Sastre.
Stanley.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is, thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members, and friends and colleagues over there. My name is Stanley Sastre. I'm an intellectual property attorney, and I'm a patent lawyer. I practice out of Mill Creek, and I'm a solo practitioner. This mandatory malpractice insurance is going to be the killer of my practice, unless I pay up thousands of dollars in malpractice insurance. When I started solo practice about 10 years ago, after being a patent lawyer at a big, large company before that for about three years, I did have malpractice insurance from Zurich. But one day, I received a letter out of nowhere, and without a claim, that my insurance was canceled because I was too high of a risk for the insurance company. So I shopped around, but I never found any insurance that I could afford. So I've been practicing without insurance for almost, I guess, 80 years or so. My main, main problem is not just affordable insurance, but I can't get insurance, because I'm a solo-practicing patent attorney. Now, I practiced solo in Mill Creek, as I said, and I have a, my clients are usually independent inventors, garage inventors, small businesses, and startup businesses. Now, these independent inventors and garage inventors are very important for the economy. Many of their ideas are actually great ideas, and some of them go on to make inventions and innovations in very competitive and very hot fields like computer software, games, children's toys, small electronic devices, energy-efficient devices, et cetera. These ideas are very important in the sense that they enable these independent inventors not only to have their American dream, but to be able to be entrepreneurs. Now, if I'm, if I'm imposed malpractice insurance, I can't serve these independent clients, because they can't afford to pay higher fees, because I have to pass on the malpractice insurance cost to them. Now, that's going to really create an access-to-justice problem for many of these independent inventors. Now, the second point I want, that was the first point. The second point I want to make is, many of the insurance companies actually have many prerequisites before they can insure you. For example, in my experience, some of the insurance companies want you to buy electronic software docketing systems. These docketing systems are very expensive, cost thousands of dollars, and they run on computers that are very memory-intensive. And I have to buy new computers, buy these new software docketing systems, in order to satisfy the requirements of any insurance company that can insure me, for example. That is going to be a huge financial issue for me. I can either buy those things and go broke and continue my practice, or simply quit. And I'm looking at alternatives here. If the insurance industry is going to charge me so much money, I will be really difficult, it will be really difficult for me to practice in the area of patent law. I can't really practice in other areas of law, like family or real estate. I'm not really an expert, and I practiced a little bit of family law before, but I'm not doing that anymore. So I can't go back to those areas of law. The third thing is that insurance companies are very clever at adjusting insurance rates. They keep increasing insurance rates every year. For example, when I had Zurich as an insurance company, they used to increase, increase insurance rates to what, $200 or $300 every year, no matter what happened. I never had a claim, nobody ever complained. So the other thing that the insurance companies do is that they don't like pro bono work, especially from patent lawyers, because if patent lawyers do patent pro bono work, they have to do it for independent garage inventors who can't afford big law firms, or even big companies that specialize in patent drafting and that sort of thing. So insurance companies don't want you to do pro bono work, because the risk of patent infringement lawsuits are very high for these independent inventors. They're not like Microsoft, or Amazon, or any of those big companies that can actually absorb all these patent infringement lawsuits. They also don't want you to do pro bono work, because independent inventors, when they have these patents, they can't defend against claims of patent invalidity. So because of all these reasons, mandatory malpractice for people in specialized areas like patent law is a bad idea, because we can't serve our clients. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, thanks for being, thanks for being patient. Governors in the room, any questions for our speaker? I'm looking around, seeing none. Governors online, any questions or comments for our speaker? None, okay. And how many more, how many more folks online do we have?
We have six.
Six, okay. We're supposed to end at five, but we're going to hang in here until they shut the phone line off, so, next up, please.
All right, and the next person is Kurt Becker. Go ahead, Mr. Becker. Oh, maybe he stepped away, oh, disconnected. All right, let's go on to Robert Isley.
Hello, this is Robert Isley. Can you hear me?
Robert, you're, yes, we hear you, you're on, thanks for being so patient. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robert Isley, state bar number 8891. I've been practicing for 40 years. I'm going to try and make this short, because I know other people want to get on. I think this, in a large part, focuses on insurance profits, and whether there's an illusion of coverage or not. In terms of insurance cover, insurance profits, these insurance companies make a lot of money. In healthcare, it has not worked out well for consumers or providers, and insurance companies and other Wall Street institutions are making lots of money. Warren Buffett, for example, made his fortune in insurance. So there has to be some kind of control on these insurance companies, so that their profits are controlled. And I think that if they were controlled properly, you'd find a lot of them aren't going to underwrite any of this. The other thing is, you know, in the same light as, and I think Nancy, one of the earlier speakers, brought this up, is when we buy coverage, are we buying coverage, or are we buying the illusion of coverage? We have claims made and reported policies, we have self-eating policies, we have tail coverage requirements, and we have attorneys hired by the insurance companies who are really unqualified to represent the insured. So there's another, another area that needs to be explored. Another quick point is, and this is probably not going to sit well with anybody, but lawyer advertising is a problem. Lawyers that advertise basically have made a business decision to have a high number of clients, more than they can probably handle. So what they do is, they get cases in, and they process them quickly, and not thoughtfully. And that's, that's a formula for malpractice claims. And I've heard other speakers talk about plaintiff personal injury attorneys doing this. I think that's probably a good, it's a good example. Now, I know lawyer advertising is protected under the First Amendment, Bets versus Arizona, I think it's a 1976 case, but when that case was decided, I don't think the U.S. Supreme Court really had a vision of what was coming. So I would take a look at that. Anyway, so those are my three areas of comment, and thank you very much. Any questions, I'll wait for those.
All right, thank you very much. Governors in the room, any questions for our speaker? I'm seeing no questions in the room. Governors online, any questions for our speaker? Governors online, any questions for our speaker?
Not here.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, we appreciate your comments. Next on, next person, uh, online, please.
All right, next up is Kurt Becker.
Kurt.
Yeah, my name's Kurt Beck, yeah, my name's Kurt Becker, I'm an attorney in Bellevue. I practice on my own, I've practiced in the past in-house and at large firms. I think you should consider an exception for clients who are sophisticated. One of the earlier speakers mentioned, uh, an exemption for institutions which knowingly don't wanna hire attorneys that have malpractice coverage. There needs to be in that full disclosure that the attorney doesn't have malpractice coverage, and then the disclosure needs to be prominent. Um, but I think...
Uh, we seem to have lost Mr. Becker. Um, let, let me go ahead and promote, uh, David Mann.
David, you're up. If Mr. Becker comes back, we'll put him in the queue.
Hey, can you all hear me?
Yes, you're, you're on the air.
Thank you, yes. This is Attorney Dave Manns, I've had fourteen years of large firm experience, and then the next fifteen years, the past fifteen, on my own, and I've had the privilege of not working, uh, all my working hours of the day. I mean, it's, I've been able to handpick my, uh, clients, uh, from sophisticated national clients to a, a broad network of first generation communities, um, around Seattle, uh, the East Side, South Seattle, from almost every continent, and, uh, I have, I have struggled with getting the malpractice coverage. Uh, I simply bought it the first few years, then I started my own self-insurance fund, which I actually have, and, and it's sitting there for this specific purpose, and it's substantial, but, of course, I, I never need it. I have good communication with my clients, I'm not taking more than I can handle, and I, I hit homers, and, uh, I'm serving at a high level of competency in these cases, and, um, it's very gratifying, and I, so, I think, just, I've been on the phone since three, that the largest voices that I've heard in favor of mandatory malpractice rule have come from two specific people who are very emotional, very, uh, emphatic, but their livelihood was made, uh, easier by the presence of this insurance. This was profitable for them as legal practitioners, and I'm sure they're good, they were, it sounded like they were on the defense and the plaintiff's side of lawyer malpractice cases, but having, uh, insurers involved in their work made it profitable and easy for them to do their work. So, that kind of testimony, you know, I'm, I hope that, I, I assume that that was well scrutinized, that the other, you know, Nancy, the family lawyer, uh, and Stanley Sastre, and these others who have spoken, there's, there's so much complexity, and I am not an expert at, uh, what the task force has looked at, and I haven't followed it in great detail, but I, I chimed in over a year ago, uh, and I didn't hear anything back with my written submission, but hearing it today, uh, the complexities, they're really deep, they're rich, there's many, and, uh, having a blanket rule seems like obviously the wrong choice. Anytime you, you do something that pushes out, uh, competent practitioners that have no claims, that are serving the communities, you've got, uh, the lawyers serving garage inventors, uh, you've got the lawyer serving nonprofits with Amicus briefs, you've got me and others, uh, providing accessibility to, uh, poor communities, uh, in the King County area, and, um, anytime you have a rule which is going to basically force us out of business, force these lawyers out of their profession, uh, and take away the lifelong pride of being an attorney that I have, that they have, that we have, any rule that does that, it seems like a no-brainer that that's not the right rule, and, and it can't be a blanket rule, and you have a couple of exceptions carved, it's not gonna work, and it, it, when you're taking away lawyer livelihood, I think, I think we're, we're in the wrong direction, and, uh, if, if we're, uh, if we're only, yeah, I think, uh, and another commenter, I think it was Bob, somebody, uh, earlier towards three, thirty or four, um, saying, why are we rushing into this? Uh, and another commenter saying, there should be a, a, a high burden on us if, if, if we're going, if forty-eight other states don't have this, why are we rushing into it? Um, so, I, I wanna add another concept, and maybe this has been dealt with at length, but, uh, big data, there's data, and, and I think I've seen this in Northwest Lawyer Magazine with some good, uh, op-ed, uh, letters written in about six or seven months ago, is where is the data? How many victims are we talking about? And, and what are the level of claims? And what are the percentages? I, I don't think there's any way to compare this to required insurance drivers. This is a, this is a completely separate situation, and unless we have data, we can get beyond all the emotional testimony from me, or, uh, or the, the malpractice practitioners, and, and just look at data, that would inform us, it's available, and it's, and it's in the hands of the, of the very industry that you'd be forcing our profession to go deal with. It's in the hands of this insurance industry, of the brokers and the insurers who would get the benefit of this rule. They have that data, and if, if the task force hasn't examined that data as to what is, what are the losses, what are the injuries to the public? We shouldn't be having twelve or twenty, uh, people talking in an afternoon and say that's enough, there's big data out there to tell us. That's what the CAGE Foundation does, that's what Amazon does, that's what all, uh, all big decision makers are doing these days, is they're looking at this data to inform them, what's, to, to inform our decision-making around this. We shouldn't be doing it on this anecdotal, uh, evidence here. And I just think that this rule forces us into a vague, uncontrolled set of dealings with a billion-dollar insurance industry, uh, which comes with non-renewals, deductibles, premiums, premium increases, and requirements for computer software and so forth. And, and like Nancy, the family lawyer, said, it, it's, it's really complex, and like the, just the last speaker, uh, Robert, you know, it's an illusion of coverage. So, I, I do not think that this blanket rule is the right thing, and it's gonna hurt me and, uh, take away something that I'm really proud of, and that my clients, uh, have really benefited from my service, and, uh, so, that's, that's about all, um, I can contribute to that, and thank you for looking at all these issues.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Governors on, in the room, any questions, comments? Seeing none. Governors online, questions, comments for our speaker?
None from me, Paul here.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I will assume there are no questions online. All right, next, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker, next speaker, please.
All right, next, we're gonna go back to Kurt Becker.
Kurt, welcome back.
Yeah, yeah, is the signal okay now?
The signal is good right now, so, we'll see if we can hold it. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, I advocate, I, first of all, I oppose the proposal, I advocate an exception for sophisticated clients who want to engage, um, companies knowing that, or, or attorneys knowing that they have no malpractice coverage. So, those clients who are sophisticated could be corporations, LLCs, somebody earlier mentioned nonprofit institutions, as long as there's prominent disclosure that the attorney has no malpractice coverage, I don't see the harm in that. Second, I think that should be expanded to also cover high net worth individuals who also want to engage attorneys, particularly in the areas of securities disclosure, setting up a new company, um, and patent prosecution, knowing that those attorneys don't have malpractice coverage.
All right, Kurt, is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Governors in the room, any questions for, uh, Kurt? Seeing none. Governors online, uh, if you have questions for the speaker?
Nope.
No questions. I always, I always have to wonder, when you talk about giving an exception for sophisticated clients, I wonder how many insurance companies would be glad, would be willing to retain an attorney who's not covered? I don't have the answer to that, but I would bet you almost none of them would hire a lawyer who doesn't have malpractice insurance. Um, I don't know the number on that, but it's curious to know, so, 'cause I can't think of a more sophisticated client than the insurance world. Next speaker, online.
Next is Anita Redline.
Anita, welcome.
Hello, good to talk to, uh, everybody here. Uh, well, I've listened to a ton of information, very, very fascinating, but I wanted to, to make, uh, some key points and some suggestions, and number one, the majority of us have insurance. The majority, the vast majority of us have insurance, and we're not paying mandatory insurance premiums, we're paying competitive premiums at that rate. But the minority, fifteen percent, uh, don't have insurance, well, we've got three law schools, unlike most states, like Idaho and Oregon, we've got three law schools pumping out law students, some of them go to other states, but many of them are here. Uh, we are competing with triple LT, so, we keep, us solos, and I'm one, and I have been one for fifteen years, uh, we can keep our rates down, we can avoid charging our clients for every single minute, we don't, I don't have to charge for every email and all the other various, uh, charges that most attorneys might do, because my insurance is affordable, so I can serve, uh, the public in, in a more efficient way. And, uh, and then the other, uh, suggestions, though, that I have, I think fee agreements can have in a conspicuous manner, like bold print, uh, have that this attorney, uh, does not have malpractice insurance, perhaps, and also the law directory would indicate, like it has in the past, that this attorney does not have malpractice insurance. Also, perhaps, superior courts require attorneys who file with the superior courts, they must have, uh, malpractice insurance, uh, that's a suggestion I thought of. Um, and then what about, uh, let's see here, a sliding scale premium, I think that was mentioned, so these new attorneys that come in, or the very old elderly attorneys that are still practicing, uh, perhaps sliding scale would be appropriate for them. Um, and maybe it's a good idea to have the insurance, uh, companies, heads of insurance companies have some meetings with, uh, the committee, or the task force, or such, about all the variety of questions, and what we're really talking about here, I think, is the competitive pricing of insurance, once it becomes mandatory, and we want to have access to justice to as many us ordinary people who are not millionaires, but yet we need some, uh, um, expertise in certain areas that are challenging and heavily regulated, um, le- legal fields, and we want to be able to afford them. So, I, th- these are my suggestions and my comments I wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Governors in the room, any questions, comments? Yes, we have, what question from Carla, or comment?
Uh, it's a question. So, my question is, are you opposed to mandatory malpractice insurance? Um, and you're suggesting, these suggestions you're making are if we want to consider it anyway? I wasn't clear on what you were exactly saying there.
Yes, my position is I am opposed to mandatory insurance.
Okay, great, thank you very much, that answers my question.
All right, governors online, any questions for our speaker?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I have a comment, this is Kim.
Yes, Kim, please.
Um, I just want to, uh, put in my two cents, that I think her suggestions are extremely well-taken, uh, I've been listening to testimony, I, um, do believe that mandatory malpractice insurance is, is not a good idea. Um, I think that most companies provide malpractice insurance, but I think her ideas were great, and I en- encourage everybody to, uh, think about those. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Kim, and then Paul, did, did you have a question or not, or comment?
No, I don't, thanks.
Okay, any other, any, from anybody else on, or, just the governors online, I think I covered it. We did, next speaker, please, we're at, uh, five-oh-five, we're a little over, but we're gonna, we're gonna marshal forward. Next speaker.
All right, we have, uh, two questions left, and the next one is coming from Cheryl Mitchell.
Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm an attorney in Spokane, and I've been in practice for thirty-five years. Um, I wanna say that insurance companies are in business to make money, and they also have a duty to defend the lawyers who pay them, so, for the argument that insurance companies are just gonna pay out claims that they think, that we think are valid, may not be the case. Um, so, I'm opposed to mandatory malpractice insurance for many reasons. Requiring attorneys to have mandatory malpractice will result in hardships for young attorneys, and for attorneys who've been in practice for a long time. Young attorneys are already experiencing the huge burdens of student loan debt, and I did some checking online, and I find that the average public school debt for a law school graduate is eighty-four thousand dollars, that's assuming no undergraduate loans, and a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for private law school graduates. Monthly payment schedules are well over a thousand dollars a month. And in, in addition to this, the cost of malpractice insurance will make it nearly impossible for young attorneys, uh, to start their own practices. The bar tells young attorneys, you don't need an office, you don't need an assistant, you don't need an office telephone, use your cellphone, do your own typing, do your own research, do your own filing, be a one-person law office. Similarly, attorneys who are somebody retired, or retired, but who occasionally take on clients, will not be able to afford insurance. With regard to pro bono, I've been, as I said, I've been in practice for a long time, and over that period of time, every year, I've taken on many pro bono cases. Um, I'm mostly working on the books that my husband and I write, we're authors of seven volumes of Washington Practice, but I do take on some pro bono cases. The bar constantly admonishes us to do more pro bono work, but I can say from personal experience that the legal interest, the public law firms that are supposed to be helping low-income law firm, law, sorry, low-income individuals are turning away people in droves. I estimate that probably they're turning away at least ninety percent of the people who call them. And every week, I receive many calls from people begging me to help them, they can't get anyone else to help them, they don't have any money, and they're in horrible situations. Uh, and I don't help anybody who can get legal help anyplace else. And so, I estimate at the current time, eighty percent of what I'm doing is pro bono, and I just can't afford to pay three thousand dollars a year to do pro bono cases. And according to what I have learned, the estimate of three thousand dollars a year for, uh, mal- malpractice insurance would be the starting point, and not for attorneys who've been in practice for a long time. So, I remember there was a retired attorney here in Spokane who spent one day a week volunteering at Spokane County Courthouse on wrongful detainer cases. He volunteered to help the individuals who wanted an attorney, who were being evicted from their homes, but couldn't afford one. And I also remember Judge Ellen Clark always would say what a great help he was. If he'd been required to have insurance, he wouldn't, uh, he wouldn't have been able to volunteer at the courthouse, I'm sure. So, what I think this boils down to with regard to pro bono work is the philosophy that it's better for people who can't get any legal help anyplace else to go without, rather than to receive help from an attorney who doesn't have malpractice insurance. It's really going to hit the people, the low-income individuals, and the people who can't get help at anyplace else, um, because they're going to ult- be the ultimate victims of this. Um, and so, those are my comments.
Thank you. Governors in the room, any questions, comments for the speaker? How about online, any comments? Hearing none.
Nope.
I'm gonna take that as a no. Uh, hearing none. Cheryl, thanks for the comments, we appreciate it. Let's, uh, I'm at five-oh-nine right now, and people are staring at me, wondering why we're going over. Next speaker, please.
All right, and this is our last question. This is coming from Martin Anderson.
Hi, everybody. I'm last but not least, I'm glad to be here. My name's Martin Anderson. I'm actually a California attorney. I've been practicing law in California for twenty-four years, and was recently admitted through, by motion, in Washington. And I had some comments based on my experiences in California, and I wanted to say that I'm in favor of mandatory malpractice insurance, but I'm opposed to mandatory private malpractice insurance, that is, insurance through a private marketplace. And the reason for that are varied. I have actually gone without insurance in California for twenty-four years, because I handle automobile lemon law cases. The average car costs around thirty-five thousand dollars, and I'm easily capable of self-insuring. I have a friend who does the same work as I do. Her insurance premiums are about eighteen thousand dollars a year, which is ludicrous. But that's the private, that's what the private market does. The private market is in the business of making a profit. And if the bar's goal is to protect clients, I applaud that, I think that's, that should be the bar's goal. But the bar has only done half the work. The bar has said, well, we need to protect clients, and the way we're going to protect clients is by leaving them to the beneficial feelings of private insurance carriers. Because we all know, private insurance companies have always looked after the benefits of victims. We know that, because there is no market for lawyers suing insurance companies for bad faith, right? That doesn't happen, that never happens. And, and of course, we don't have personal injury lawsuits in Washington, because insurance companies pay claims in a timely fashion, and take good care of the people who are harmed by the behavior of bad actors. And of course, I'm being facetious, that's not true, right? But at the end of the day, if you decide, if you punt on the question of, geez, who's going to bear the risk? Who's going to get the benefits? And you say, well, we'll just leave that to the private market. You haven't done, you haven't fulfilled your responsibility. The bar hasn't fulfilled its responsibility, because in deciding that something needs to be done, there are a million subsidiary questions that need to be answered. Who should, who should bear the risk? Should attorneys who handle higher volumes bear more risk? We heard somebody talking about attorneys who advertise, right? So if they have higher-volume claims, should they bear more risk? Or should attorneys who handle higher-value claims bear more risk? Or should every attorney bear the risk equally? And we've heard people talk about how unfair that is to people who handle pro bono cases, and handle cases on behalf of poorer consumers. I handle cases on behalf of poorer consumers. Should we, should people who handle claims on behalf of corporations bear more of the risk, or should they be excluded completely from having to share in the risk pool? Because we've heard both. We've heard some people who have said that sophisticated clients should be able to hire lawyers that don't have malpractice insurance at all, but that would essentially be taking those attorneys out of the risk pool. So who is going to make these decisions? And if you decide to leave it in the hands of private insurers, then they are going to make all the decisions that you, Board of Governors, should have made when you made this decision. If your, if your goal is to protect the public, you need to think about these things, and you need to make these decisions, not private insurance companies. So, you've already decided, hey, the limit should be half a million dollars. Well, that's fine. I mean, that, that was a completely arbitrary number. It means that my clients who have thirty-five thousand dollar cars will be well overprotected, and someone with a million dollar personal injury claim will only be protected at fifty percent. But you haven't done the work of saying, okay, how should we spread the risk? Who should bear the risk? And if you don't make these decisions, the private insurance companies will, and they may not make those decisions in a way that's fair, either to the citizens of Washington, or to the lawyers in Washington. And so I feel very strongly that if you're going to require mandatory malpractice insurance, you either need to adopt a PLF-like model, like Oregon has, where the bar essentially will make those decisions through its subsidiary PLF, or you need to negotiate an agreement with a single provider, so that everyone who has to get insurance gets it from that provider, and you can set the rules. You can say there's a mandatory tail, you can say there's no tail. But, but you can make the decisions that I believe that you need to make, in order to ensure that everyone's interests, both the citizens of Washington, and the lawyers in Washington, are protected. And I want to say, I say this as sort of, almost like a disinterested third party, because I don't practice in Washington currently. Someday, the reason I sought admission is because someday I'd like to retire, and I'd like to move to Washington, and I'd like to be able to do pro bono work. And if, if there is a charge for malpractice insurance, and it's anything like what the premiums are in California, I won't do that. But today, I'm just sitting, sort of sitting here, thinking about things from the perspective of my office in California, and thinking, you know, wow, it seems like a good idea, and it is a good idea, to protect the clients of lawyers. But if all you've done is said, well, you should go get private malpractice insurance, you've only done a small portion of the work. And if you punt the rest of the work, it will be decided by private insurance companies, and they may not make the decisions in, well, not they may not, they will not make the decisions in the best interest of Washington lawyers or Washington consumers. And ultimately, they will essentially become a regulatory body, just like the bar. They will then be able to impose regulations on lawyers, which, which may be at odds with the regulations that the bar would have imposed. They, for example, could say, well, we're not going to insure people who advertise at all, which of course, the bar could never do, that would be a violation of the First Amendment rights. They could decide that they don't want to insure pro bono lawyers, or patent lawyers, or intellectual property lawyers, or lemon lawyers, or lawyers who sue insurance companies for bad faith. All of those things could happen, and the bar would have no power to do anything about it unless it adopts a PLF-like model from Oregon, or a contract that would, would not only, sort of an Obamacare-style contract, where it says, there's one provider, and it must insure everyone on the terms we said. So, anyway, thank you very much for listening. I know we've gone over, and I know I'm last, I hope I haven't talked for too long. If any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. Questions in the room, any Governors with questions? How about Governors online? We have one more Speaker, by the way. Any Governors online with questions?
Bill, this is Kim.
Kim, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, being, coming from a medical family, where most everybody I'm related to is either a nurse or a doctor. I think his point about insurance companies making the call is very, very well-taken. It's happening, and has been happening in the medical industry for quite some time, where the insurance companies are making decisions overriding medical doctors' advice, in some situations with grave results. So I think he has a very good point, who do we want making these decisions, about the type of clients we take, and why we take them, for instance, pro bono work. So I think that's a very significant issue that we need to consider. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. And last, uh...
Well, Mr. Pickett, sorry to interrupt you, but we have James T. on the webcast, and he has informed me that he has been waiting for hours on hold, and he did follow the instructions to get in the queue, and he'd like to be heard after this next comment.
James T., we missed you somehow, hang on there. It's not last but not least. Elizabeth Renee, you have been waiting patiently since about one o'clock, so thank you, please.
President Pickett, and I could have waited for James T.
That's all right, go ahead.
I want to praise the efforts of everyone on the task force, and everyone in the room. I have to defer to the massive expertise here. My bar number is 10710. I was admitted in nineteen eighty, and I practiced for sixteen years in the public sector, and then went off to seminary to pursue ordained ministry, and only have come back since, I think, 2014 to act of practice. And I've done a lot of pro bono work, and I'm just beginning to actually build a practice that, you know, I have a little money to do that with. But I want to, I want to support the comment of the last Speaker, about the insurance companies and so forth, and the PLF and Plan B, or the universal pool. But one of the things that hasn't been discussed here, and seems to have been dismissed out of hand, and I say this with the acknowledgement that what we're doing is we're proposing a court rule to the Supreme Court. But we have a structure in place in Washington, it's called the Lawyer's Fund for Client Protection. And what do we pay each of us? Thirty-five dollars to support that, a year? And, you know, it's just, it's just piddling. Why can't we each pay more into that? And why does that fund have to limit its scope to outright theft against a client? You know, why can't, why can't malpractice be addressed in a non-adversarial deliberative process, where experienced lawyers can determine whether a client has been harmed by the malpractice of an attorney? I can't think of anything more heart-wrenching for a client who has already been wronged in some other way, to then have been wronged by their attorney, and then have to go through another lawsuit, within a lawsuit, within a lawsuit, and deal with insurance companies and so forth? Why can't we have a straightforward, simple process, where lawyers can determine whether or not malpractice has been considered, committed, and have a fund ready to compensate that client, and at the same time even let that client air the emotional content, and demonstrate to other lawyers the true impact of what's gone wrong in their, in their case? I think, I say this also with the understanding that not very long ago, we've had a task force on the escalating cost of civil litigation in the Superior Court, and we've looked at how long it takes to take a lawsuit through, say, King County. If we had an expeditious, simple process modeled on our Lawyer's Fund for Clients Protection within the Bar Association, if we had a universal pool, or a Plan B, however we want to call it, where every lawyer contributes more than we contribute now, but much less than it would have to cost to buy mandatory insurance, say, at three thousand dollars a year, clients could be vindicated. They could have a forum where they could really tell things like they are, and we wouldn't have lawyers and insurance companies fighting each other over something that should be resolved expeditiously. Anyway, thank you, that's my comment, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth Renee. Any questions, comments in the room from the Governors? I see none. Online, any questions, comments?
Not here.
Hearing none, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Okay, online, I think, James, James, I believe you are our last caller.
We do actually have, I'm not sure if you have time, we do actually have four people waiting to ask a question now, and I do see James T. here, I'll promote him first.
Yeah, okay.
Bill, may I just say, I have a flight that I have to catch, so I've got to leave in two minutes.
Okay, cool, thanks Carla. Go ahead, James.
I'll keep my comments brief, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, Mr. President, Madam Executive Director, fellow members of the Board of Governors in attendance and on the phone. My name's James Tree Fry, my bar number is 30617. I was admitted to the Practice of Law in Washington State in 2000. I volunteered at the Center for Justice in Spokane, working with indigent clients during my last year of law school, and as part of that experience, decided to enter into my career in the public service. First as a public defender, then working as a staff representative and attorney for a public-sector labor union. And in the last few years, I've been involved in municipal management in the city of Bellevue, and the city of Arlington, Washington. And I think there is a certain segment of the population out there, similar to me, that kind of vacillates in and out of legal profession jobs, or in professional management, particularly in the public sector. I have maintained my private practice outside of those jobs during those time periods to enable me to take on pro bono clients, and I have not maintained malpractice insurance. As it relates to the prior comments, I won't repeat things that have already been said, but I do think it's important to put out specific examples of things that wouldn't happen if this type of rule was passed. I very recently provided expertise and advice to a community group looking to get a redistricting petition passed in the city of Everett, Washington, by the name of Everett Districts Now, is institutional, and helped them do the initial review of the petition, after they failed to gain enough required signatures. And then they went back out and were ultimately successful in getting districts for the community that are increasing democratic participation. That would not have happened if I would be required to maintain malpractice insurance, because I would let my bar license lapse, because I'm not primarily engaged in the practice of law in my day-to-day job. I do maintain my CLEs and go to all the requisite training, and then some, and maintain, you know, my breadth and depth of the current case law and trends. And I do want to make a couple of observations as well, just from a process and fact-gathering standpoint. I've had an opportunity to review the materials provided by the task force, and I watched through their presentation to the Board of Governors prior to today's opportunity for public testimony. And I do want to say that I agree with kind of a stepped approach to this issue in Washington. I think doing something like the South Dakota Notice, or the State of Illinois Practice Management Focus would be a good first step. I do think that, like a couple of comments prior to me, these insurance companies do require certain requirements of their insured. And I think the state bar needs to do some fact-finding in terms of identifying those things, that the insurance companies require of practicing attorneys, and potentially take the step of setting those regulations themselves, as opposed to relying on the insurance companies to be the de facto regulator of those practice requirements. And that's something that the bar should take a look at, to try to ensure, you know, reduction in errors, or reduction in harm to those clients that we see at a lowest level of action required. If we do go forward with a mandatory minimum, I would request that we do some type of, kind of minimal approach, in terms of providing minimal insurance. I think perhaps a two-tiered system would be good, in terms of providing an absolute minimum, maybe that's, you know, a hundred thousand, or three hundred thousand, similar to the technicians' requirements that are in place now. I read through the materials, and it indicated the average claim was about sixty thousand dollars. That could be done through a state pool by increasing those contributions that we make to the Fund for Lawyer Protection. I just wanted to get out those few comments, I know everybody's running late, and I do definitely appreciate the time, and I'll go ahead and stop myself there.
Any comments? Thank you very much. Governors, any comments in the room? Seeing none. Governors online, any comments or questions for the Speaker? All right, how many folks are on the line?
We have three people right now.
All right, are the three people that were on the line, any of them, did they join after the five o'clock hour? Do we know?
One of them has been waiting for quite some time.
All right, so, so with the folk, the purpose who, excuse me, the person who's been waiting for quite some time, we'll take that as our last comment. And then the other two people, please stay on the line, because I want to make sure that you have, I want to make sure that you have the email to get your question answered, to direct to us. So please stay on the line, but we'll take the one final question or comment from the person who's been on the line for quite some time. Thank you, and thank you for being patient. Go ahead.
All right, and this one is coming from Patricia Michaels.
This is Patricia Michael, and I live in Allensburg. I retired in 2014. I'm on the active list, however. And I worked for twenty-seven years with the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office in establishing parentage and child support cases. I submitted two sets of written comments to the task force, and then I also attended the March 7th board meeting, in which I made comments on this issue. And I am urging the Board to oppose mandatory malpractice insurance for lawyers in Washington. It concerns me that we are so quickly jumping on... that we are so quickly jumping on the bandwagon that only two states have jumped on, and that is Idaho and Oregon. I think we should be much more thoughtful before we do this, and it's probably a bad idea. Secondly, uh, I'm concerned that the makeup of the task force did not include any uninsured lawyers. And so, what has happened is today, in desperation, these people have had to call in to express their thoughts. So the task force has operated in a void of comments from uninsured lawyers. There are five other reasons, and I'll go through them real quickly. Um, the task force has produced no evidence about how many uncollected judgments there are in Washington against uninsured attorneys in malpractice actions. Without that statistic, they're operating in a void. And secondly, the argument that there would be more claims filed against malpractice attorneys if insurance is mandatory is a complete red herring. There is no way to measure that. It is more likely that plaintiffs' lawyers are just telling malpractice clients that the reason for not filing is a lack of insurance. It is more likely that the case is a loser case. In any other content, the context, if the defendant attorney has assets, there is going to be a case against them if they have not operated their business, or their farm, or any other endeavor appropriately. And insure, and, and lawyers do have assets, uh, for example, boats, cars, houses, real estate, computers, office equipment. There is no reason why an uninsured, uh, lawyer can't be successfully sued and collected against. Third, the public will actually be harmed if this measure passes. Uninsured lawyers are actually performing a service, as many speakers have pointed out. Insurance companies are very hard to control, and without the safety valve of lawyers being able to drop insurance or not have insurance, the rates will go up. That is just a given. Uh, poorer members of the community will suffer. They will be without lawyers because, as has been testified to on this, uh, set of, uh, comments many times, uh, pro bono lawyers are those who are going to suffer the most if this is mandatory. Insurance companies will literally be able to drive lawyers out of the profession, and we've had a lot of testimony on that, in effect, disbaring them by refusing to insure them or refusing just to insure the, uh, type of practice they do. We are going to lose especially pro bono lawyers and others who operate on the lower end of the spectrum, uh, for disadvantaged clients. Um, finally, um, I'm going to reiterate what I said at the March meeting. Uh, the only player that benefits by mandatory malpractice insurance are the lawyer, the, are the insurance companies. It is reminiscent of the spider and the fly. The spider, being the insurance companies, are trying to encourage the fly, which is the WSBA lawyers, to come into its web. And once in its web, of course, uh, this group of lawyers is helpless. So I thank you for your time, and I'm encouraging the Board not to recommend mandatory malpractice insurance.
Governors, any questions for the speaker? None in the room? Any questions from the Board members online? Uh, hearing none. Those of you who are online, if you did not get your questions, uh, over the phone, if you wish to submit additional comments, please note that the Board will continue to receive and consider written comments until May first, 2019. Please email your written comments to insurancetaskforce@wsba.org. Again, it's one word, insurancetaskforce@wsba.org. Um, thank you for attending the, the Board meeting today. Uh, the Board wants to assure everyone who participated, both in the room and online, that your comments are taken very seriously. The Board will take into consideration the comments received today as it prepares to take action at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is May sixteenth and seventeenth in my wonderful hometown of Yakima. I hope to see, uh, many of you there. So again, thank you for the meeting. We stand adjourned.